Buddy, this is the Village Combined Committee and Board Meeting for the Village of Willow Springs. Today is Thursday, July 15, 2021. We are simultaneously conducting this meeting by Zoom. The time is 7:01, and this meeting is called to order. Trustee Ara.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Micah.
Here.
Pash. Moon.
Here.
Carr.
Here.
President Niedermeyer. Thank you, that completes the roll. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. We have one presentation this evening. It is Approval of Ordinance 2020-0-11 as revised, establishing the Village of Willow Springs' Special Service Area Number One and amending Ordinance 2020-0-12, authorizing special service area bonds. I wanted to say a quick word. Our attorney, Vince Kankar, is here also to answer questions. But first, a quick word to explain that this ordinance would extend the previously approved special service area at the Willow Glen community with two modifications. First, it changes the construction company from Madison to Apex. And second, it adds a deadline of July 23, 2021. It does not change any prior village-approved plans or zoning. As I said, our bond attorney, Vincent Kankar, is here tonight to field questions. But before that, I just want to provide a little more summary and background as I now understand it. The SSA is a financing mechanism for the developers to secure the funding of the project. Apex Construction includes team members who were previously onboard with the project with Madison. So while the company is new, the members have been close to the project from the outset. And I want to also highlight that as part of the SSA, Apex is providing a $43.5 million performance bond. It is my understanding that this type of bond is not often issued, and it ensures that a high-caliber project will be completed to the original specifications on that site. Now, I also want to be very upfront. We recently learned that the business model for this development has shifted to rent rather than to sell the condos and townhomes in that area. I'm told that this has to do with the changes in the market and the forecast for the market going forward, and of course, COVID. Concerns about the business model can, should, and will be addressed if the development moves forward. I will attest that the team has been cooperative and agreeable in addressing our concerns and reassuring that development will remain a high-end and successful project for them and for our village. Attorney Peck has also shared his insight that there are ways or ordinances for villages to oversee rental communities. But again, the issue before us tonight is the SSA. And for all practical matters, that is the financing. And nothing in the previously approved plans and zoning in my understanding is being changed by this ordinance or considered tonight. Again, Mr. Kankar, you're the expert here. That's just my understanding that I want to put out there as I know it. But please correct me if I have any misunderstandings and share your expertise with us on presenting the ordinance.
No, you are correct, Mayor. The ordinance specifically states that the project is as previously approved by the village, by village ordinances, which means zoning and everything else like that. And you're probably not the only one that was just notified of the change. Let me put it that way, of the business plan. Okay, that's come about recently. The project has kind of morphed over the last two or three years. The project, the original project was approved by an ordinance in 2018 when its special use was granted. The project is, the business model rental is to, the business model actually was never specified into zoning ordinance. Let me put it that way. It's, well, it may say condominiums, condominiums are rented too. So it's, nowhere in does it say owner occupied. But I understand that's what the presentation was. So that the presentation is the presentation. Okay, that's the business model. This ordinance does not accept or change the project. Okay, if there's going to be anything done, the board has to come to an agreement on that. Okay, and approve that. We're not doing that tonight. All we're doing tonight is forming a special service area, which is the area where the project is going to be built. And we are approving, we're amending the ordinance which was issued to approve the bonds at last time. And the only real amendments are there's nothing, we're just changing 2021 to 2022, no, 2020 to 2021. The definition of ordinance is the same. And then the, the one or more series of bonds to bond. There's going to be only one bond instead of a bunch of bonds. What's going to happen is there would be one bond. It's not going to be broken down and sold to little investors. There's going to be one bond, and it can't be broken down. It can't be transferred only to sophisticated investors. And it's signed the correct documents to protect the village. The way we have, the way things are, the way this is going to progress on the bond sale is that when the bonds are sold and the proceeds are obtained, it's approximately $7 million proceeds, they're going to go into a construction escrow. Okay, the money is not going to be, the money is put with a construction escrow at Chicago Title Insurance Company. And that construction escrow provides that the money that we're funding, the basically public improvements with the sewers' waters and streets and Archery Avenue improvements and everything like that, demolitions and site removal, is not going to be and cannot be paid out the first money. The developer has to expend, and that construction trust has to spend at least $3 million of their money for any of this money is even touched. So that's to make sure that we're not out, you're not the first one out. Let me put it that way. So the money is going to be coming from the developer before it comes out of our pocket. And that's the same arrangement we had last time. But, and that's arrangement that's going to continue. We really haven't made any, there's really no substantial changes in the project, except there were, it's a delay of the year. The money's a little different now. It costs more to build. Everybody knows it costs more to build. The lender is different. The main lender that's buying the bonds, they're buying the bonds is the same. But the one who's buying, no, sorry. The main construction lender is loaning like $43 or $45 million is the same. Petros, it's a big company that deals with these things. The company that's buying these bonds is a little different now. It really doesn't make any difference in the scheme of things, but that's the big change. And the other big change is that the contractor is different now. Again, that's not anything that would deal with what we're really doing tonight. But just so I explain it all and let everyone know, the contractor is different. The contractor in the past deal was Madison Construction Company. The contractor in this deal is Ajax Construction Company. Okay, Ajax is a big company. And I have a copy in my file of the bond that they're going to provide for, I believe it's $43.800,000. There is a bond they have to provide for 100% of the residential project and 100% of the special services, which will be funded by this bond, by this bond issue, the $7 million. So there is a, there's a full, going to be a surety bond from the contractor. No one goes anywhere, and the Village of Willow Springs is a beneficiary of that bond. I made sure of that also. So no one's going anywhere without having all the construction documents, without the construction escrow, and without the surety bond. That's really the gist of, that's not really connected to what we're doing tonight, but it is connected because people are concerned if where's the $7 million going? That's always a concern.
Yeah, it's insurance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's protected, I mean, it's protected as much as it can be.
So are those types of performance bonds issued often? Would it be something that you could normally expect? Or is that something that's pretty unique with this arrangement?
Those type of performance bonds, and payment bonds too. So the contractors are paid. There's two bonds associated with each project, performance, that the surety company says that if you don't construct it, we will construct it. It's our cost. And the payment bond is the other bond which guarantees all the workers on the project and all the contractors that they're going to get their money too. You're not going to be leaving an electrician out. You're not going to be taking, you're protecting the workers, you're protecting basically all the union workers that work on a job like this, and where there's prevailing wages paid.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board members in this regard that Mr. Kankar can help answer?
Just to be clear, the bonds are taken out by the construction company, by the developer, not the village.
Right, yeah, the surety bond is paid for by the developer. It is correct.
And just to correct the statement, it's Apex Construction Group, I think. You misspoke, so I just want to be clear.
Apex, you're right. When I say Ajax, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, then what I'd like to do now is move, I know that a lot of people are here. We have people participating by Zoom. I presume that many of the public comments are related to this issue. So why don't we go ahead and move public comment forward now? We'll start with the people here present at Village Hall. If you've signed up, I'll take that list. And I'll invite anybody forward to make public comments. Now, we have the mic, and then we have wipes to clean off when you're done speaking, please. And please, everyone, be mindful that it's a long-established village ordinance that we try to limit speakers to three minutes so that everyone gets a turn, and then in total, 30 minutes for any one meeting. Anything we don't get to, of course, at any time, always, you can submit us an email or come see us at Village Hall and ask us your questions, and they will be answered. Do you want to get me to it? Okay, all right. So for the first speaker, it would be Don Barr.
Hey, Don, would you grab, could you grab the mic? And you have to kind of really talk into the top.
And also, we have wipes when you're done. If you could just wipe it off. Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to address the board, Mr. Mayor, Trustee. I'm Don Barr, longtime resident of Willow Springs. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and offer a hearty thank you to the Village Board and the Willow Glen developers, their consultants and their support staff. Willow Glen, as I recall, have received a green light to begin construction just as the COVID pandemic broke out and shut down the economy in the first quarter of 2020. I understand that the project financing agreements were withdrawn, contractors and subcontractors pulled out. Similar scenarios were commonplace across the country. We're not alone in that. Many projects around the country and around Chicago land will not restart in the way they were originally intended. Together, the Village Board and Willow Glen developers never gave up on bringing the Willow Glen project to fruition, all during this time. Today, as a result of their persistence and often agonizing efforts, new financing has been secured, as mentioned earlier. New contractors have been brought in, and Willow Glen will once again get a green light for construction to begin. Congratulations to all those who made Willow Glen a reality for Willow Springs, a wonderful example of local government and private industry working together for the benefit of our community. Willow Glen's a $53 million development that I fully support. Thank you.
Your comment, Mr. Barr.
Just grab one of those, and I guess you could.
The next speaker would be Mary Lou Edwards.
Madam President, I would just, I would speak my position because I am not here to address the issue as it is related. So if there are others who want to address this particular issue, would you take them now and allow me to answer them? Thank you.
We'll do that.
Thanks.
Okay, with Carol Valdez.
There you go, Carol.
Carol Valdez. Since the project is changing a little bit, I'm a little surprised that people weren't notified about this. So more people will be aware that the GOG company is going to ask questions. But what I'm wondering is, this project is going to be a TIF project?
It's still part of the TIF, yes. That has not changed. Again, nothing from the original development plan or zoning has been changed or is being considered for change here tonight.
I'm a little confused. Are the buildings and everything from the original builder going to be the same, but now they're going to be rentals instead of purchased?
Is my understanding, Vince, can you confirm that?
I am not really, they've never told me exactly what their rental is. However, I did see a copy of the appraisal, and the appraisal mentions that they're going to be rental units. So I think they probably, I'm getting, I have the information secondhand. I'm really not that familiar with it, didn't really work on the project. So I'm like on the other side on this. But from my secondhand information in the appraisal, yes, they're going to have rental units.
But I think the question that Ms. Valdez is asking is, are they still being built to the specifications in the original plan? And I think our answer is, my understanding is that the original plan is not changing. The original development plans that were put before the board, as far as the specification of construction and the finishings and that sort of thing, and none of that is changing here tonight.
If I can, the plans cannot change. Those are the plans that were approved. If they're going to be modified at all, they'll have to come back before the Village Board.
But those plans were approved to be original. So I'm wondering, are those the same plans this?
Yes.
Okay, so are all of them going to be offered as rentals now? Or are they going to be sold as homes? And then if they can't be sold as homes, then they could be rentals?
My understanding that the business plan going forward is for them to all be rentals at this time. And they have brought in a leasing company that they have shared information with us by the name of Lint, who manages high-end properties to handle the management side of renting these. But again, these are issues that I think as it moves forward, we tease out, we consider, and we have discretion over. Right now, we have to look at just what is before us, and that is the SSA, which is their financing mechanism. Minutes.
Are they going to still hold the new builders to the green light with the school district? The same as the old ones? Yeah.
That is, again, that is not changing. That is in the original documents, and that is not changing.
I don't want the school district, you know, to lose out on that.
It is the same.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez. Next would be Mary Jane Manella.
So I will have a water commission report to do probably after Mary Lou Edwards' comment at the end of the meeting. But I'm going to take an opportunity now to say, this is going to have an enormous negative impact on the grammar school district. We are going to add an entire huge development of transient children. And they're going to be there because now I'm hearing, I wasn't as concerned when I thought they were all going to be, you know, condominium units, but now we're talking about townhomes and condominiums. You know there's families moving in there. You know there are. And so that's going to produce, like I said, a huge amount of transient children into an already, you know, already difficult school district. So I would sincerely hope, I know that that's not the plan for tonight, but what I'm hearing is that the plan that you have has already been approved. So I hope that you at least consider that aspect of this. Thank you.
Comment, Mary Jane. Next would be Carol Mistrada.
I guess I have questions maybe on that or sort of the activity. So I think what we're all saying is, or most of us are thinking is, is this development going to be prosperous one? Or is this going to be one where residents have trouble? And therefore, a detriment to the future? Also, I would like to put in your mind is, you know, I didn't hear anything about any of this being changed. When did this come about? When was the first time the board, the president, the village administrator, came to set? No, you don't have to answer me, but it seems like it was very recent.
Maybe some things need to go. I'm happy to answer that the first that I was aware that this was changed entirely to a rental project was Friday. I think that, this past Friday. I think that prior to that, there was changes in the financing, and we always knew from the very first presentation that rental was an option. That selling was going to be the main focus, but that rental would be an option. Then things happened, like COVID, and the game got changed. So this is the financing, this is the, this is the plan that we're left with here. Again, this plan is not different, it's not different from the original plan that was approved. There's no changing to the zoning. Right now, we're dealing with the SSA before us.
Friday.
All right. Is there any further comment? Okay, thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else that's listed? Julie Anderson.
Hi, I'm Julie Anderson, and I'm on the school board. I believe rentals are going to have a very serious effect on that school. When this was pitched, it was pitched as selling units, owner units. You can say what you want about condominiums. If they want to sell all the condominiums and then rent them out one at a time, that's a different thing than putting a huge rental unit. People who buy condominiums, I was in real estate for 34 years, owned two offices. They pretty much don't have children, and that's what we were sold on. People who rent have children. So you're talking 200 units? You're probably talking about 200 children. How much, how many dollars are going to go to the school on that? Have you, I don't know what was originally agreed to, but I can guarantee it's not enough. So where does the village plan to find the other money? Or is this one of your bids to close the school? I don't, I don't really understand why you would ever think 200 rental units smashed together. If you look at other communities, they are not really successful, especially way out here in the southwest suburbs. We're not talking about the near north side, or the west loop, or the south loop. So I would really wonder what's going to happen to our school. It's a very small school. I don't even know if it could handle that many more kids.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you like to revisit your comment?
Hi, Mary Lou Edwards, Westport Lane. This is almost embarrassing because I came here to talk about my dog.
Welcome your talk about your dog.
Nonetheless, I'm comforted by the fact that I'm hearing the bottom line is that nothing will move forward with this project until it comes once again before this board. Correct? That's the bottom line? Okay, now I'll talk about the dog park. Cindy Jerkonis, a resident of the village, has set up a website on Facebook for our dog park, Willow Springs Dog Park. And I was wondering if perhaps we couldn't link that to our website so that people, when they click on, could go straight to the dog park. The other thing that we wanted to talk about is that we'd like to buy some agility equipment for the park. And we're not sure of the procedure. I mean, we know we just can't go modifying the dog park. So I don't know if we have to bring a plan before the board and tell you what it is that we'd like to have there. We expect to self-finance through fundraising. We're hoping that there's a possibility of our, having a presence at the, and I know this is a late date, and if it can't happen, that's okay, we'll work around it. But if there's a possibility that we can work a little bit into the Willow Fest to raise a little bit of money. But we don't think it'll be a problem to raise money for agility equipment if the village gives us the go-ahead to do that sort of thing. So perhaps you can enlighten us as to how we might proceed? Thank you.
Okay, Mary Lou, so I have an answer from our attorney to your question. If you bring the plans to us and give them to our administrator, we can clear with our insurance and move forward from there. Thank you. And Mary Jane, did you say you had the water commission report?
Okay, I'm now approaching you as the water commissioner from Willow Springs. So the contract for the Vine Wood Water Main Replacement Project has been granted, as of today, to Morrow Sewer Construction, Inc., to the amount of $1,259,855. The Cronin Avenue Water Replacement Project Injustice has been completed. The Water Commission is currently being sued by DNB Investment Group LLC. This is that little retail center in the middle of the apartment complex off of 88th Avenue. Okay, what the Water Commission needs to do is put in one meter that the entire, that the owner is responsible for, and he needs to bill his tenants. Instead, what's happening is that we have meters all over the place. Instead, what's happening is that we have meters all over the place. The J and J Fish operator has usage in the middle of the night when he's closed. So it's obvious that his unit is hooked up to somebody else. So we feel that we're going to be fine with this in the end, and we want to get this under one, uh, one meter. So that's, that's what that was. And then finally, the painting and the restoration of the High Tower will begin in August, and there still are not enough chips to begin the smart meter replacement program, so that is probably going to end up being completed in September, October. That's all I have for you folks tonight.
Very much. We now need to consider public comment from anyone on Zoom who wishes to participate.
If you're on Zoom and you want to participate, you can use the reactions button or the raise your hand button. You can unmute.
Hi, this is Wendy West. I'm a new resident to Willow Springs, and we, we really enjoyed living here, so we're excited to meet all of you at some point in time. We did hear about the change, potential change for renters to come in down the street from us instead of the condos. I honestly don't know a ton about it, but I will tell you from personal experience, we lived in a lovely condo building for a long time, and it did turn into rentals, which is the reason we now live in Willow Springs. It was not a good outcome, and so we are, you know, we're opposed to having renters in there. And I just wanted to kind of let you guys know, that's kind of how we feel about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else from Zoom wishing to participate? Okay, and again, you know, just because public comment is coming to a close now, you can always submit your questions to us, come to us, and we will hear those and get you an answer. So public comment has ended. I will ask now for a motion for approval of ordinance 2020-oh-11, as revised, establishing the Village of Willow Springs Special Service Area Number One and amending ordinance number 2020-oh-12, authorizing the special service area bonds. Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Pash, second by Trustee Carr. Madam Clerk, roll call, I'm sorry, discussion, I think we've put that all out there. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ara. Kennedy.
Aye.
Mica.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
All eyes, thank you, motion carries. Vince, thank you very much.
You're welcome. In their meeting.
Okay. We'll move on now to disposition of previous minutes. In our board pack, we have combined committee and board meeting for June 10, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Ara, second.
Second.
By Trustee Kennedy, discussion. Okay, there being none, roll call vote, please.
Ara. Kennedy. Mica.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Moon. Carr.
Aye.
All eyes, and those minutes are approved, thank you. Moving on to reports of officials, first is that of the President. I actually have quite a bit to cover tonight, but I think I can move through it rather quickly. First, the Board is aware that department heads have previously held contracts. The positions of Administrator, Clerk, Police Chief, and Public Works, all held contracts that have recently expired. Moving forward, it's the intention of the Board to proceed without contracts for these positions, and we will shift to those positions being in Village employees. I talked with the department heads on this decision, and they're all aware. And we intend to work through any particulars to close the gaps that might result from the transition. They are doing a fantastic job, and this change is just an attempt to get us more in line with the best practices of other towns. Next, we have the tornado, which seems like a long time ago now, but it was just after our last board meeting that Willow experienced the tornado and resulting damage. We were more fortunate than some of our neighbors. The Public Works Department did a fantastic job. Neighboring towns graciously helped out, and I imagine that this will come up more in the Public Works report, but I just wanted to acknowledge the fantastic work and the patience from our residents as well during the cleanup. Next, on June 24, Administrator Woods and I attended the West Suburban Chamber of Commerce and Industry State of the Region Event. It was a great event, a panel of mayors and administrators from seven surrounding towns. I represented Willow Springs and spoke about the highlights and ongoings here. I am so genuinely proud to represent our village. And if there was one takeaway from the event that was common to all the towns present, it was that all the towns are currently trying to rebound from the pandemic. They are happy to be opening up, and they are working with their businesses and residents to move forward. One more, actually a few more things. Willow Fest, all the details you'd ever want to know about Willow Fest and Car Show are on our Village website and in the newsletters that will hit your mailboxes soon. But again, those dates are August 12 to the 15. There will be carnival rides, premier bands, a beer tent, food vendors, a craft show, bingo, and more. And let's not leave out the fireworks on Sunday night. As many of you know, there's a budget planning workshop at Village Hall this Saturday, July 17, at 9:00 a.m. It was placed on the schedule at our last board meeting, and the agenda has been posted, and it's open to the public later that same day, on Saturday, July 17. From noon to 1:30 here at Village Hall, there's coffee with the mayor. To comply with the Open Meetings Act, we will have two board members present and myself. So it will be myself and Trustee Kennedy this time around. Going forward, we intend to rotate participation from the other members of your board. Administrator Woods will also be president, they're present. There will be coffee, light fare, and conversation. We look forward to seeing you all there. And that concludes the President's report. So we'll move on to the Village Administrator Report. Brent Woods.
Thank you, Madam President. The only thing I have is a reminder, I did receive the budget priorities from everyone, and this is a reminder that we have this, the meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday.
Thank you, Administrator Woods. Village Clerk, Lori Chaussee.
We're supposed to have a meeting on November 11, but it is Veterans Day, and the village will be closed, so we're going to have it the following Thursday, November 18, for a Village Board meeting here at 7:00.
Includes your report?
Includes my report.
Very good, thank you. Village Engineer, Dan Ledge.
Thank you, Madam President. In your packets and listed on the agenda is a ward of a contract for the 2021 Road Resurfacing Project. To refresh everybody's memory, this includes the mill and resurface of Dory Lane and Mildred Court. Bid, public bids were, or sealed bids were publicly opened and read aloud on June 15, and six proposals were received. The low bidder was M&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company in an amount of $86,881.16, which was below the engineer's estimate of $95,507. M&amp;J Asphalt is pre-qualified by IDOT and eligible to work on the project. And we, we are responsible to, you know, should the board choose to award a contract, to award to the lowest responsible bidder. And it is our recommendation to award the contract as stated.
All right, is there a motion to approve as presented the expenditure of the $86,881.16 to M&amp;J Asphalt for the road resurfacing project?
Slow move.
Motion by Trustee Kennedy, second by Trustee Mica, discussion?
Just one question for Dan. Have they done resurfacing work in our town before?
They have done projects in the town twice in the past during my time here.
And no problems whatsoever?
Relatively few problems. We had trouble getting them to finish Punch List two years ago, but the work was eventually completed.
So we're comfortable with the vendor we've chosen?
Well, we, we have to accept the lowest responsible bidder when using MFT money. So they are, they are pre-qualified by IDOT.
Okay. Just trying to get to the bottom line. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Tiara. Kennedy.
Aye.
Mica.
Aye.
Pash. Moon. Carr.
All eyes, motion carries. Does that conclude your report, Dan?
If there's any other question, that does conclude my report.
Yes? All right, thank you, Dan. Village and, I'm sorry, Village Attorney, Eric Peck.
There's no legal report this evening, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. And Treasurers, Zabinski? Okay, no report there. So we'll go on to reports of standing committees, Finance and Administration Committee, Trustee Ara.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve payroll and warrants stated June 24, 2021. Payroll and payroll expenses in the amount of $190,343.69. All fund expenses in the amount of $119,773.48 for total expenditures of $310,117,17 cents.
Okay, we have the motion by Trustee Ara. Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Trustee Kennedy, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ara.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mica. Pash. Moon. Carr.
All eyes, warrants are approved.
Okay, moving on to the next one. Like to make a motion again to approve payroll and warrants dated July 8, 2021. Payroll and payroll expenses in the amount of $96,894.11. All fund expenses in the amount of $163,628.73 for a total expenditure of $260,522.84.
And you made the motion, Trustee Ara, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, second.
I'll second.
By Trustee Kennedy, discussion?
Ara.
Aye.
Kennedy. Mica.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Carr.
Warrants are approved. Anything else to report on, Trustee Ara?
The only other thing I would like to report on is, is just the Car Show once again. Heading up that group, we have preregistration going on. Some of the premier parking locations are going fast, so if you're interested in getting a good location, please preregister. Pre-registering before July 29 also allows you to get size shirts that you would like for the Car Show from our sponsors. So looking forward to getting more participation, and hopefully it'll be a good day, so we're looking for that. And then the only other thing I would like to say is just all to all the Willow Springs employees about the tornado event and how they responded, especially Public Works, but the Police Department and Administration also helping. So it was, it was an all-out effort and something, I've been in this town for over 35 years, and I, and I have never experienced any of that, and the response was great. So thank you, everybody that was involved in that.
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Trustee Ara. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report tonight. Before you have the CAD summary from Chief, I don't, do you have anything else to add to it?
Oh, nothing, just the reports are, the summary from July 1 to today. Seventy-three incident reports, with seven involved motor vehicle crashes. Had 46 traffic stops, which led into 78 traffic violations. That's my report.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Municipal Buildings and Grounds Committee, Trustee Mica.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report, it's the day. Thank you.
Trustee Pash.
Thank you, Madam President. If you haven't heard, we're thanking the Public Works for the tornado. Yes, we do have to thank them, but I want to put out a special thanks for the following villages of Lyons, McCook, Summit, and Justice, and the crew from Lyons Township that did come out and give them a hand. And I don't think we would have got everything cleaned up that fast if we didn't get the help, but it's nice that we can work with the other Public Works Departments around us, and we do owe them, so we will be taking care of them if they need us. One week after that, we experienced heavy rains causing flooding in town, closing a few streets that needed to be closed. And I'd like to thank Cook County for supplying emergency sandbags for the resident on Wolf Road and anyone that needed them. And I have plenty more, but we're going to move on. My report for the Beautification Committee. We had a meeting on July 13. Brick orders have been placed and will be arriving in a few weeks. Any fall planning will take place in October. They hosted a presentation on composting at Legacy Park, which was very well-attended by 13 people. And the next presentation will be after the bingo event at Willow Fest. That bingo will be August 15, from 12 to 3 p.m., followed by their presentation. We are still looking for donations of cases of water or juice boxes for Willow Fest for fundraising for the Beautification Commission, and they can be dropped off at Village Hall. Commissioners are looking forward to seeing everyone at Willow Fest. Stop by the booth to say hello, buy water, juice, and raft 50/50 tickets. And the next meeting will be August 17, and everyone is welcome to attend. See the Village website for details, and that is my report.
Thank you, Trustee Pash.
Unless Keith has something to say.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
This, we, after the storm, we had a street sweeping company out, and they finished all of those streets on Tuesday. So everything was complete on Tuesday. They brought two sweepers out on each side. That was all completed Tuesday. I passed out a little paperwork to every one of you trustees, and that basically is for the tornado cleanup with all the other villages, the equipment and stuff that was provided, our, and our help. It's a FEMA rate, I mean, we're not high enough to justify a FEMA claim on it, but I mean, just the cleanup and everything was close to $40,000 in that cleanup project. So I just brought that out just to give you an update about that one.
Appreciate you putting these numbers together, Keith. It should be worth mentioning that we did declare emergency, so we passed that ordinance and submitted that. So maybe if potentially there's any way to get reimbursed for these costs, we'll be looking to do that as well. So thank you for putting the numbers together, that helps.
That's all I have, and there's a more detailed report if you want it.
Director Grantland. Concludes Public Works. We'll move on to License and Franchise Committee, Trustee Moon.
Yes, I, I have no report tonight, Madam President, unless Brett has one. Came in late, I didn't get, but we have to, thank you.
All right, thank you. Building and Zoning Committee, Trustee Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an extremely busy month in the Building Department. Sixty-three permits were issued. Total construction cost was $767,583. That resulted in permit fees of a few dollars south of $20,000, $19,984. For the year, we had 192 permits issued, $2,677,604. Total permit fees for the year are now at $88,378. That concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Okay, and we've taken care of public comment, there's no need for executive session. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Yes, Ms. Valdez? Okay, thank you for that feedback. So we were having a motion to adjourn the meeting, was that made by Trustee Pash? Is there a second? By Trustee Kennedy? Discussion? There being none. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Me? Thank you, everybody.